Be worse.
Good evening. And I call this meeting of the Community and Economic Development Committee to order. Before we get started, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the things that are going on in California right now. As we know, there's, um, there are multiple fires going on and we want to definitely keep those folks in our thoughts and our prayers. So if you could have a moment of silence for them, please. Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhel.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Fluehling.
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Can we have the approval of the minutes?
I'll move it.
Is there a support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Is there any public comment to the committee? Going once, public comment going twice. Public comments are closed. Communications to the committee?
None.
Any old business?
No old business.
For new business, we have Resolution 2024-1550, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and New American Funding LLC for the purpose of providing down payment assistance to eligible home buyers.
I'll move it.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Wayhel.
The, uh, thank you. This resolution and the next two, I'll have Mr. Avery as the chair for signing purposes. I assume that we can move it, pass it, and it will be altered. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Fluehling.
Fluehling, yep.
Fluehling.
Through you to, I believe you said Derek Bradshaw?
Yes.
I just have, I've, I've got a couple of questions, if I may.
Mr. Bradshaw, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening, sir. Three questions I had for you. Is this, is this a new program for the, it's existing?
Yes.
How, how is the NSP and NPRR funded?
How are the...
The, the two programs that are, are stated within the, uh...
Right, for the down payment assistance.
Yes.
So those are federal dollars that we get through the Housing and Urban Development. We provide up to $10,000 of down payment assistance for a home buyer. That home buyer has to meet a couple of requirements. Eighty percent of median income. Simple math is a family of four, somewhere in the mid forty-five, forty-six numbers. We're just getting new numbers for the new year. For a one-person household. And then, um, that then allows them to pay closing costs, down payment, those type of things. The challenge right now is trying to buy a house, number one, and to try and buy houses affordable, number two. And, uh, average home price in Genesee County is somewhere around two-hundred, two-twenty, somewhere in that range, which makes it a tough, a tough thing. And then those homeowners, there's a payback program, so it's not a hundred percent grant. So if they stay in a house a certain number of years, we proportionally forgive a certain amount of that loan.
So it's federal CDBG money is what funds the program essentially?
It is through Housing and Urban Development. If it's more, it's a program called like the Home Program. It's actually, that's the total acronym is HOME. Very similar to CBG, though. We get an allocation that comes down from the federal government for it.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that. My last question at this time, I noticed on all three resolutions, there are, I believe, five communities excluded. Clio, Davidson, Flint, Otter Lake, Lennon?
Yes.
Can I, I'm curious is why?
Yes. So in order to be eligible for the program, you have to be a community that participates with our CDBG program. So any communities that participate with the CDBG program under HUD are eligible to be used for any of our HUD funding. If you don't participate with our CDBG program, it's a, you're not eligible. You would have to then go after like state, or state dollars.
So that's the county CDBG?
Correct.
Okay. Good. I, I spoke with Davidson today and they told me they had opted back in this year to the county program.
So they will be included.
They'll be included. Otter Lake also said they've also been in the program. They didn't recall opting out.
Yeah. So I can go back and see who's, so it's a three-year opt-in or opt-out. So we have new, new people coming in, like literally this year. And when this year, year for us, starts in May.
Okay.
So May first is our year for this.
Okay.
It's not a calendar year. So when somebody's opting back in, it's absolutely they're opting back in. The question is what, what date that's, they're opting in for.
Okay.
And I'll double-check and get information on who's opting in and who's out and when they're opted back in. Just to make sure that we're clear.
So this, even if we pass these tonight, that can be adjusted at later?
Yeah. So whatever gets passed tonight, whatever communities at the time are eligible, are eligible, and we adjust those.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Good questions. Um, any other questions from any other commissioners? Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Resolution 2024-1551, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Preston Home Loans for the purpose of providing down payment assistance to eligible home buyers.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Support.
It's been supported. Question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1552, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Staunton Financial, Inc., for the purpose of providing down payment assistance to eligible home buyers. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a support?
I'll support it.
Moved and supported. Any question and discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2024-1604, approval of a grant award from the CS Mott Foundation in the amount of $60,000 to provide for non-motorized trail analysis.
Don't move.
It's been moved and supported. Question and discussion? Mr. Shoemaker.
Thank you, obviously. I'm not a member of the subcommittee, but thank you for acknowledging me. My question is, where, is this a county-wide analysis of the non-motorized trails or...
Mr. Bradshaw?
Um, yes. Uh, uh, thank you, Commissioner. We're currently in the process of updating our master plan for the entire county. And, uh, the Mott Foundation wanted us to do a little deeper dive into how do we implement a county-wide trail system? And so they're providing us the funding to be able to do that, um, further investigation into it. So yes, it's Fenton, um, all the way up through to Clio, Davidson, all corners.
Yes, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. To the chair. Um, didn't Parks, didn't Parks participate in a non-motorized trail analysis a couple of years ago, I thought it was?
So we've always done an analysis. So we've had a non-motorized trail plan for probably fifteen, twenty years now. Parks has participated in that process. And, um, so what they're wanting is a little bit more detailed, like, um, how do we actually, you know, focus efforts to finish trail segments? So right now, we have kind of what I call a, here's the wishlist map. And every year, we can build, you know, one or two. And they're like, let's dive deeper into that and really get into the nuts and bolts of how to, like, you know, we have some awesome stuff going on on Fenton, but how does that connect up to Flint and Grand Blank? And we have great stuff going off in Atlas Township. You know, how do we actually make these all connect? So, yeah, it's all tied together.
Now, that, if I may, Madam Chair, thank you for clarifying that, because that's what I was trying to get to is what, what's the end goal of? I think it's great we're trying to do this, but what, what are we trying to achieve here? So it's trying to come up with that total connectivity that they're looking for through different communities and so on and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Any other question and discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, other business. Uh, I don't think we have any other business, but, um, Mr. Bradshaw did mention, um, the master plan that we're in the process of updating. And, um, I wonder if you could just step back up for a minute and just so that all the commissioners, because we do have some new commissioners, if they could, um, if you could talk a little bit about the master plan that we're currently updating and the survey that's, that was recently went out to community members.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. So, um, we are in the process of updating our master plan, our county, our future. And it's a unique plan. Very few counties have a plan that really tries to put all of our federal resources in one spot for one coordinated effort. And so through that process, um, we're just in the starting phases of that plan. So, uh, community survey, um, went out to get, um, interest on, um, what people would like to see. We also did, um, some focused, uh, questions to different people in the community. So it could be a nonprofit, it could be a township person, just to kind of get a feel for what their interests are. So that as we kind of update that plan. And then, um, we're just in the process now, um, because we're at the very kind of early stages of taking a look at, um, what kind of things and new initiatives do we also want to include, right? So we have a good baseline, um, but when we talk about, um, you know, what kind of things the, the county's interested in, things have changed dramatically from when the last time we did that plan. And so how do we kind of adjust those? So, um, exciting process. It's going to take us, we're probably about another year-ish to get to the end. And then there'll be, uh, we've already had, I think there's been two or three open houses so far. And we have them in different parts of the community. The open houses that we get more traction on as we go is when we really start talking about projects. Because I think ultimately, um, residents are most interested in like the project in front of their house as opposed to the bigger kind of picture stuff, so. But yeah, stay tuned. We'll have more to come.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, this committee is adjourned at 5:51 PM. Five forty-one.
Are we all ready?
Yep.
What time is it?
Five forty-two.
I call the Finance Subcommittee to order at 5:42. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuzina?
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger?
Here.
Commissioner Wayhel?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
Present.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
I need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We now take time for public comment to the committee. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the committee? Second ask, is there anybody that wants to address the committee? Third time, seeing none. All those, well, we just move on. That's closed. Communication, there are none, correct? No old business? New business, we do have an add-on that I'd like to formally, uh, add to the agenda as the number seven that you should all have in front of you. Uh, so could I have a motion to add that?
Move it.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. New business, Resolution 24-1536, approval of a request to create Post and Phil One Administrative Secretary and Two Solutions Technicians in Genesee County's IT Department. This request will eliminate three other positions. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Support.
I'll support it.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I, I have a discussion.
Sure.
Just quick, I had mentioned, um, um, previously, and I mentioned again today, how I look forward to having a discussion as a board about what the staffing of our office looks like. I raised it during this, uh, item because I know that it's the, uh, you know, Post and Phil and Administrative Secretary, and of course, there's two positions looked like, or positions being eliminated. But I was thinking the other day in our office, uh, not to have a lengthy discussion, thirteen people, one secretary. Thirteen members of the commission, one secretary. And so as we look at supporting, you know, additional positions here or there and so on and so forth, I want us to be thoughtful about that as, uh, in the future, you know, I'll be, um, kind of leading us into discussion about what is adequate staffing for our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this, of course, is just dealing with the ID, IT department and it's, uh, no net gain or loss of, uh, positions. I do believe we still have a hiring freeze. Do we not still have that, Mr. Freeman? We've dropped that formally?
So no, not a technical hiring freeze. There's a process to go through, uh, hiring new people.
Okay. And that's following this in this resolution? Okay. Is there any other, Mr. Shoemaker?
Is there a financial impact to changing positions and titles?
Uh, Mike, could you answer that? Or finance?
I believe there is, and I, I say that with all humbleness, because I'm not sure I understand it.
I appreciate you trying to clarify.
So one very long-term employee retired, thirty-plus years, something like that. So there's a huge savings there. But the way I understand budgets, the way a budget works, that savings doesn't necessarily get allocated to the IT budget. It goes elsewhere, some of his expenses. So the net bottom line to your question is, there will be an additional, uh, budgetary adjustment with the moves up and down for about twenty-two thousand a year next year.
To, to, to the negative for your department or to the cost-saving side?
An increase, increase.
What was that? I'm sorry.
An increase.
An increase. Okay. All right. And that's in your budget, though? You can sustain that?
It's a budget adjustment. Well, I've had so many vacancies for so long. It depends how you view that. I've never met my budget, never spent it for staffing. I someday hope to, uh, but I don't, I'm not counting on it.
I was just thinking we were giving you too much, but no, I'm just kidding. Um, no, okay, so you have it in there. It's, there's, there's room in your budget for...
I'm going to beg to ask Crystal, is that, I'd hate to lie. I don't know.
No, I, I appreciate you, I appreciate you trying to answer my questions.
Uh, so in the current fiscal year, he's had enough staff vacancy so far in fiscal year twenty-five to cover the additional cost. It's about just over fifteen thousand, so year twenty was not too far off. So for fiscal year twenty-six, if we budget what he has now and then add this change, it would be an extra fifteen thousand, and twenty-six is budgeted. So it's not there yet, but we would put it there when we go through that process.
May I continue, Mr. Chair?
Continue, please.
And that's not, um, including, though, because we have, uh, union contracts out there that we're going to have some increases as far as, we're hoping to have some increases as far as
Yes.
cost of living and stuff like that. So that could actually, but increase that number also.
Yes. And the other PC's talking about, um, when departments have people who are on the defined benefit pension plan, when those people retire, they get excited because their budget for their department goes down. But we still have to make that pension payment. So it just goes to a different line within general fund. So that's what you were alluding to on that.
Any idea, um, where we're going to make up the cost for these employees and the increase?
No, I mean, if you approve it today, when we go to do the twenty-six budget, those positions will be there. And then we'll just, it'll just be part of our normal budget process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I might point out regarding the cost savings, we've continuously brought things forward that we have saved money on. Including the million dollars on our phone system that we'll reap in the next five years. What was it? Oh, the contract for service for our, um, seven-hundred-forty-thousand saving in, uh, for our firewalls. I don't know what's next. I'll bet there'll be more. There will be more.
All right. Thank you both.
Anybody else?
Dr. Brown?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Can you talk a little bit to the nature of the two solutions technicians? And, um, in particular, I'm wondering if you can maybe speak to the nature of how it would make our IT department, um, and overall for the county, um, more effective or safeguard some things? Can you talk about the nature of what these two, uh, individuals would do?
Sure. There's two strategies about that, what they do and, uh, the idea of a, uh, migration path for entry-level employees. This is still, this new position's an entry-level position. For the IT world, it's a fairly low-paying job. Now, in the real world, it's actually, you know, IT people get paid a lot. We typically hire, uh, we hire interns, and we sometimes, when they're really good, we like to keep them. But of course, they won't stay on an intern salary. So one of the strategies is to create a, a lower paying position that's enough to keep somebody. But enough to attract someone, say, who's at an intern level or entry level, to say, you know, there's something here for me. I can move into this job. So part of this is, is the retention strategy. Retention is so critical for us. It's so hard. This other one, by the way, has been open for months. We've got no applicants. I've gotten other positions, been open for two years. No qualified applicants. And I would much rather keep the people I have today here, beg them to stay, treat them like gold, anything to keep them, than to have to recruit someone new who, who knows what'll get. Sometimes we're at them, they interview great, and then they're, they end up not being so great. The ones I have here, I know who they are, and I know they're great. I'll keep them. I will keep them. Uh, you know, mostly through treating them nicely. I can't throw money at them, uh, but I can treat them very nice, and I do. So on the task side of things, this role is, uh, the configuration role. The, the hundreds of computers we send out on a weekly basis, they're all configured in a certain way to operate well, to be secure, uh, to be patched and managed centrally, all that stuff. And this role is to manage that, uh, fleet of computers that we have. In my monthly reports, I've been mentioning about how we're going to Windows eleven. When we first found out about that, we were facing the prospect of being more or less shut down by the due date, which was October of next year. We thought we'd never make it. We made it. I don't know how we did it, but we did it. Now, without the staff that we have, particularly this particular role, whether this, one of these persons is already here in a different role, um, we never would have gotten there. And I'm grateful for that. And these kind of things surprise us. Like, oh, boy, we have, I think at the time, thirteen-hundred computers out there that didn't, weren't up to muster. And these are kind of things I don't even want to know about, you know, this is sort of keep the lights on stuff. It's not exciting. It's not anything. But without it, we can't operate. So that's, that's what we're doing.
Well, thank you for what you guys do behind the scenes.
Thank you.
Is there any other, are you through?
I'm done. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Short men, short agenda, and we're already over time. Resolution 24-1554, approval of a purchase order to AJP Commercial Shredding for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-five in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars to provide for the annual storage file maintenance or management and shredding services for Genesee County's Legal Records Department. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the following account.
I'll move it. Support with a question?
Go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one, it was a set out for bid.
Hi, I'm sorry, who asked the question?
Uh, Commissioner.
Um, no, it was not set out for bid. This was, um, Circuit Court took over Legal Records Department in January of last year. This was an inherited, um, expense. These files are physically managed and maintained at a facility. In order to place it out to bid and to switch vendors, we would have to physically remove and relocate over ten thousand documents, files maintained there. I'm not aware of it ever, having gone, to go out to bid when it was under the Genesee County Clerk's jurisdiction as well.
Um, if I may?
Sure.
There, and, and I'm, I'm very familiar with delicate documents and stuff like that, dealing with, uh, delicate informational personnel information, but, um, what did you mean by we would have to move them to get another company to look at them, to shred them?
Oh, I didn't say, we, yeah, we do plan on shredding them.
I understand that, but you were telling me the reason we couldn't get another bid, or why couldn't we get another bid? Or couldn't get bids on it? Why, why couldn't we?
The vendor doesn't provide just shredding services. They file, they store the hard copy documents for the Legal Records Department. That's what I was referring to. The hard copies that are held onsite would have to be physically moved to another vendor's facility.
Boxes and boxes of, um, court records?
Yep.
Or off-site at a facility?
They're already stored at their facility?
We don't have room to manage them? Sorry.
We don't have room to store them here, so they're physically stored somewhere else. It's, um, the clerk's office does it, prosecutor's office does it. We have several different off-site storages.
So I understand this. And, Mr. Chair, if I may continue, thank you. We're storing them at a facility that's doing the shredding also?
Dual, yeah, more than one thing.
They are doing more than one thing? Okay, so they kind of got us over a, a barrel, because what are you going to do? Is it in our agreement that we have to use them?
No, I think, I think to her point, it's just logistically.
They won't let anyone else in?
Yeah, logistically, to kind of pick up all of this stuff and move it to a new facility may be more than kind of continuing a contract that we already have with them. Are these the records that you're in the process through the state of trying to scan and...
We are in the process of scanning and shredding. Legal Records started the shredding process in November of twenty-twenty-three, and as of today, they have shredded over forty-five thousand records. We currently have just over ten thousand in storage. We do have two new supervisors within our Legal Records Department. One of them is specifically designated to review and evaluate the State Court Administrative, um, retention regulations. And that is in her wheelhouse to, um, determine what needs to be retained and what can be shredded. It is going to be a process, but it's in the works. We have not added to any of the storage fees. Um, it is going to be a process, but it's in the works. We have not added to any of the storage fees. Again, these were inherited last year. Um, we're just kind of continuing that service, um, because those files do need to be stored.
One other question. How many files do you think will be shredded for this 3000, or $33,600? Do we have an idea of how many?
I do not have any idea, 'cause that is, um, the majority of that expense is storage.
Okay. So just where I'm confused is here, I'm seeing commercial shredding for fiscal year. I didn't see anything about, am I missing the, an annual file storage management fee here? Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I just, I'm sorry.
Just go ahead. Not a member of the committee, but question for you. Um, at, at any point, has anyone looked into, is there other companies that do this? I'm assuming they, they manage your retention schedule also?
Uh, there are other companies, and we have utilized other companies in the past, but we are in the process of eliminating that service, um, as a whole.
Is there a timeframe for, like, a possible end date?
No.
Okay.
I would say two years max, but again, I, that's not my wheelhouse as far as the retention policy and what documents have to be maintained, and there's no way around it. Um, I do know Legal Records has worked very hard this last calendar year, um, getting over those 40,001 shredded. Um, and that was all files held within the Circuit Court.
Yeah, I understand the logistics of they store them, manage your retention, and shred them.
Mm-hmm.
If it's a, a 10-year program, is it worth looking at somewhere else for a lower price? But like you say, if it's, it's two years, maybe it's not?
Yeah, it is, um, on the radar.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to, you know, last night I sat through one of my municipalities that just hired a company to shred, uh, their documents. And, uh, uh, if I recall right, what they were, they paid $30,000, and all they did is paid for shredding, not retention, not storage, and it was less records than what this is. So, uh, for me, what I'm saying is, what I'm hearing is that this is not a bad deal, but, uh, you know, I know that, uh, we should go out for bids occasionally, most of the time. But, uh, I don't have a problem with this number after hearing what I heard last night. Is there any other questions?
Um, how does this compare to, like, the cost for last year? Is it?
Um, it's comparable. I mean, we average, um, anywhere from 28 to $3,000, 2,800 to $3,000 a month. Um, that does vary depending on what files are stored and need to get pulled and brought to the facility. Um, there is a charge that's associated with that, um, but that, that's variable. As I said, it's, it's averaged out to be, um, about 2,800 to $3,000 a month.
Are you through? Is there any other questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24, 1 dash 1558, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Preferred Removal Services in the amount of 100,000 to provide for two opioid and emergency, emergen, emerging drug death and analyst positions. The cost of this agreement is fully grant-funded. I need a motion and support.
I'll move it.
Or? Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I did have a question. In the, in the backup, um, material, it indicated that this grant, we received it, looks like way back in 2019, and, and haven't fully expended it. So just wanted to get a little bit of a, a background on, uh, why that is and, uh, what these folks are doing for us.
Sure. The grant gets continually refunded by the CDC, so it just keeps getting extended and extended and extended.
Could you, could you please introduce yourself so we know?
My name's Keith. I'm from the medical examiner's office.
Thank you.
Um, what they do for us is they analyze our toxicology reports that we get daily from our toxicology lab. They look for, um, of course opioids and any other emerging drugs that people overdose on, have toxic levels on. They'll bring them right to the doctor's attention, and then he'll complete the doc certificate a lot quicker. And that way, that information is used for the Health Department, Sheriff's Department, other community stakeholders that rely on that information and get help in the areas that it's needed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Uh, just refresh my memory. Where's the grant come from?
It starts at the CDC level, and then it comes down to the state, and the state issues it to us.
Okay, federal to state to us.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24 dash 1572, approval of a request by Genesee County's Health Department to update the family planning fee schedule.
Move it.
Support.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all?
Mr. Chair, could I ask one question? I noticed in the, uh, the background that there's a, like, a sliding fee, uh, schedule, is that right? Based on percentages, but it, there was no background that told me kind of what that meant, so I'm curious about it. I assume it's based on income?
Hi, I'm Michelle Stell. I'm the health officer, and this is Brad Snyder. He's the deputy health officer. Gonna let Brad speak because he supervised this program before, so.
What was your question again?
So in, in the document that we have, it shows what I interpret to be a sliding fee schedule, 25%, 50, I think, and up. I just wanna know what that's all about and how that works in practice.
Yeah, so one of the great features of the family planning program is that it offers a sliding fee scale. So with that, um, uh, patients coming in, they will receive, uh, a bill for their service that day based on their income, their household income. Um, and it goes from 100% down to 0% based on, on that household income and, and size of household.
And it, it also looked to me like there was no, there's a column in there for patient contribution, is that right? Uh, and that was all zero? What does that, what does that mean?
Patient contribution, so.
I may not have that.
The donation, is that referred to?
Donation, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, all patients, whether they, wherever they're at in the signing fee scale, whether they're, um, uh, have insurance, public or private insurance, they have an option to donate to the program. So there, there's, that's what that column is there for.
I see. So there's no required donation, but they can give, if they wish. Out of curiosity, how many make a donation?
Very few.
Very few, okay. All right, that makes sense. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24 dash 1599. Excuse me. ordering to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the week's ending, 11/24/24, 12/1/24, 12/8/24, 12/15/24, 12/22/24, for the total amount of $21,302,472.54.
Move it.
Support.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 24 dash 1607, approval of a proposed budget amendment to the 2425 Appropriations Resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request. Can I move it? Or? Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a curiosity, Mr. Chair, um, there's a visiting judge's line, I, and that's probably been explained to us before. I imagine it's been here. Can, can someone?
Yeah, at the Circuit Court, we have a visiting judge, Judge Ball, that's coming in and working on cases that can be expedited in order to help clear up the docket of other judges.
Okay.
And it's my understanding the Supreme Court is re-up that grant for another year?
I believe the, yes, you are accurate. Um, the specific, um, adjustment that I submitted for that is because we have a vacant attorney referee position with the shift of judgehood from referee to judge. We now have a visiting referee that will be getting paid out of that until that position is filled.
Okay, so that represents an increase in spending, then? Is that?
It's a shift.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Lateral move.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we now have the, uh, resolution that we added, uh, from G Card, the approval of a request to create, post, and fill one G Card weatherization manager position. Move it. Support. I have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Finance is adjourned at 6:06.
All right, Government Operations is called to order at 6:09. Can we have the roll?
Commissioner Wayhel?
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker? Commissioner Winfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Fluehling has stepped out. Commissioner Lloyd?
Present.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have the approval of the minutes from December 4th, 2024.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Uh, do we have any public comment to this committee? Any public comment? One last time, any public comment? All right, public comment is closed. It appears we have no communications, no old business. Under new business, we have Resolution, uh, 2024 dash 1237, approval of a contract between Genesee County and Securus Monitoring in the amount of $50,000 to provide for electronic monitoring services. The term of this contract is from October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025. The cost of this contract will be paid from the account listed. Is there a motion?
With a question?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Commissioner Shoemaker?
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is through the chair to whoever can answer. October 1st has passed, 2024. Why, three months later, are we seeing it now?
Uh, Ronda here from?
Look like it.
I, I can't answer that question right now for you. I can get an answer, but I can't answer it right now.
Further discussion? Mr., uh, Mr. Shoemaker? And then Mr. Avery.
What, what type of monitoring, electronic monitoring is this? Do you know, Josh?
Yeah, this is for the juvenile justice, um, folks. So people that are involved in the, um, juveniles who are involved in the court.
Minors, yeah.
It's like the ankle bracelet for the kids?
I'm sorry, yes. I thought you said, who is it for? Yeah, it's like a tether.
Okay, thank you.
Additional, Mr. Shoemaker, or good?
I just said, I was gonna wait, but I guess I can ask it now. Can we have an answer on this by next week, why it's late? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not in committee, just wanted to add.
Mr. Avery.
Could you please remove James Avery as chairman on this as well?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that, uh, thank you.
Your hand is so tired from the last year that you.
Can you be any nicer about it?
Put Mr. Lloyd on that real quick. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Resolution 2024 dash 1560, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Supreme Court in the amount of $81,774 to provide for the continual, continuation of the virtual backlog response docket at Genesee County Seventh Circuit Court.
Move it.
It's been moved. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion? So I, I had a question, but I'm, well, maybe, maybe the person is here. Um, yeah. So I, when I was reading through the, the collateral material, I was curious about how much of a backlog we have, and I didn't really see it in there, so I'm wondering if you might speak to that?
Um, I don't have the numbers of where we started. Um, I did get the numbers pulled of how many cases Judge Ball, who has been assigned to the backlog docket. Um, he has been able to push through 278 cases, um, since this grant started.
And these are all criminal cases, is that right? And, and the backlog was generated by COVID? So these are ARPA dollars?
Um, no. Well, they, they're federal-funded through the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That is my only question. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. There's no other business listed, but I, I wanna mention a couple, oh, I'm sorry, we have another one, sorry. Resolution, uh, 2024 dash 18, excuse me, 1603, approval of Genesee County's technology use policy. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it with a question.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Commissioner Winfrey?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to know if, uh, if we had considered, uh, DEI statement as part of this policy.
I don't think so.
I don't believe so. Yeah, in that case, I'd like to table this resolution until we can get an appropriate DEI, uh, statement as part of the policy.
So there's a motion to table. Do we have a support for that?
I'll support it.
Moved and supported. Uh, discussion on the motion to table. Commissioner Shoemaker?
Um, but before we vote to table, I just wonder what we're looking for in the policy that would be, as far as usage, 'cause it's, it, we read through it. I'm just trying to understand where we would put a DEI piece into the policy. Now that I might, I don't know if it's gonna affect anybody by holding it up, but I just, I just don't know where we would read through it. 'Cause it's kind of the usage of tech, our technology throughout the.
Uh, yeah.
Commissioner Winfrey?
I would suggest that I possibly consult with the DEI Commission, uh, to assist them in coming up with such a statement.
Commissioner Shoemaker?
I just don't know what, it's, it's a usage policy. I just don't know. Oh, yeah, I guess what, what would, would look like, for, if you could give me like an insight of what it would look like.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any idea what it would look like.
I don't know what they would add to it for DEI.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can wordsmith, you know, something appropriate.
Well, what, what would you be looking for as far as the use of our technology that would be something DEI should be weighing in on? That's kind of, you know, where, where I'm at.
Well, you know, I think that, uh, the policy is, you know, people use the, the IT system. You know, so it's not about the, the hardware, it's about, you know, what, what the policy speaks to.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Um, I think I understand the question. I understand what, what you're looking for and what, um, I supported it, you know. Maybe it's something that, that just basically, um, as a reminder that, you know, as any users utilize technology to transmit, you know, any communication that, you know, that, uh, that folks are careful and cautious not to be communicating something that's inappropriate as they're using our system. Um, you know, uh, it could be something, you know, maybe some can statement that talks about, you know, not transmitting communications for the purpose of being discriminatory or being, um, you know, uh, demeaning or demoralizing or something like that, just like a can, you know, just like some kind of statement. You know what I mean? That just makes sure folks are using and communicating in an appropriate way.
Very well said, Mr. Chair.
That cleared it up, thank you.
I, I'm probably made, um, that, that language is in there.
Can you read what you have? Do you have it in front of you?
It's, uh, page nine, and, uh, it's under a whole section about personal use and misuse. And, um, it's not worded in the way you would say, and I think maybe.
I use too many words sometimes. Don't use my words. Use your words. Just read, just, uh, just, just.
Just read, just a, just a general overview. You don't have to read the whole thing, but just the sentiment of what you have.
Okay, so item F, illegal or unethical activities, engaging in illegal activities such as hacking, pirating. That's probably not related to what you're looking for. Users must not use county resources to promote political campaigns. I don't want to, that's probably not it either. Our personal use, personal email and social media misuse.
Mr. Chair, maybe we can table it until next Wednesday? And then we can work with Commissioner Winfrey to review that policy and make sure that he's comfortable. And then if you're not comfortable by next Wednesday, then we can push it back to the next committee meeting. And then that way it keeps the process moving. Doesn't delay anything.
So we do have on the...
I would, I would like to include Chairman Lloyd in that discussion as well.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table. And so I'll look to the Corporation Council if the motion's approved. Oh, sorry.
One question.
Yep.
If I may.
Commissioner Fluehling?
Does the county currently have an anti-discrimination policy that covers all aspects of county service?
The answer is yes.
Thank you.
So I had a procedural question about if we vote to table, do we need a date to bring it back or?
Proper terminology is a motion to postpone, and you can postpone indefinitely. That would probably be proper in this instance.
Okay.
If you're going to bring it back, if you're going to postpone it from this committee meeting and then bring it to the board meeting next week is what I heard. I think it would just be a motion to postpone indefinitely and then bring it back whenever...
We may or may not have it next week, but...
I think you should postpone indefinitely, should be the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Winfrey, are you willing to have a friendly amendment to postpone as opposed to table?
Certainly.
Is that a yes? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And the supporter, you're good with that?
I'll support it with a comment. So in instances like this, it's a good time to bring it up because we're just starting this session of commission. You know, I know that we were accustomed to having like a special affairs. I'm not in favor just to meet, just to meet either. But right now, you know, if we had a special affairs right before our board meeting, we'd have a place to send those items that we're still working on that we could go over right before our meeting. And then if we're good with it, then move it to the commission that same day and take action, so it's not delays. In this setup that we have, you know, we don't have many options. If there's something that comes to committee that needs more work, but yet we don't want to delay it past the next full board meeting. So I won't delay in terms of discussing this. You know, but maybe we can look, maybe it's something we need to talk about in governmental operations. You know, to figure out what's the solution in situations where we don't want to... Because I want to, I want this policy not to be delayed, you know, two weeks or a month, but I want to make the adjustment and be able to still take action. So I just wanted to just raise that.
Okay. Mr. Fluehling?
Through you perhaps, through the corporate council. The current anti-discrimination policy, does that supersede any language in any other policies?
I wouldn't say it supersedes. I would say that I believe it's through HR is what our anti-discrimination policy is through, passed through this board. Off the top of my head, I'm not 100% positive, but it would be a general anti-discrimination policy. And there's several other policies underneath, like specific policies that probably include specific language to that effect. But to answer your question, yes, the general anti-discrimination policy covers everything.
So I guess what I'm asking, we would want to make sure that the language in this policy wouldn't be in conflict with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Kuzina?
I don't sit on this committee, but I do have a question. I assume that to bring this resolution up to this point, it went through the proper procedure and all the different departments looked at it, such as corporate counsel, and it met the DEI requirements that the, that the county has and human resource sources, et cetera. Did you take a look at it, Mr. McMillan?
Yes, I looked at it and I approved it. Maybe I'm not clear on what the DEI requirement is for a technology use policy.
Well, would it meet our stated policy that this board has, the county has already adopted as to what is proper DEI? Non-discriminatory is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I would say the policy is not in conflict with the DEI principles that the county has passed.
Nor is it in conflict with state law or federal law?
No, it is not.
Thank you. No furthermore.
Mr. Chairman?
So...
Yeah, I believe the, you know, this discussion came up when the board was considering the updated purchasing policy. And during that time, at least I thought that this board had at least adopted a tacit agreement that all future policies would include some form of DEI statement. And that's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Getzinger, I saw your hand.
Yeah, my comment is, it seems like we ought to be able to come up with a DEI statement that should be in all policies. And then we wouldn't have this problem.
And it could be something as general as, you know, the IT department is committed to the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion, period.
All right, do we have additional discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not on this committee either, but I, I believe that the DEI Commission just met on Monday. And so I was going to say, we need to give them another month at least to, if they're going to review this, because there could be something in there, or there could be something missing that we are overlooking and not really thinking about. And so I would feel comfortable with, I'm comfortable with what's been said already in terms of, you know, not going in conflict with the state or HR policies and all of that. But I just want to, you know, the DEI Commission is set up for this purpose. And so I would feel more comfortable if we had that body look at it and then go from there.
Commissioner Lloyd?
I don't, I don't know if I, you know, I'm cautious to set up something where this is more general statement, where we have policies that, you know, we're working on and we're changing or department, because we have the authority to change policies too in any other departments if we determine that we want to do that. And, but the department heads, you know, they change a policy. And then whether it's DEI Commission or any other commission, now we're sending our work through those different groups for them or whatever. I'm okay having fingerprints on it, but, you know, if we have something canned, then we just know through our office and all of the departments, it automatically just goes in there without us adding that extra level of review and consideration and discussions. Because I think that just will create like backlog and delays and, you know. And then the other piece that I want to get into is where we have different commissions, you know, feeling like they are the determining factor as to what we do as a board. Or it has to have their buy-off or sign-off before we take action, you know what I mean? So I'm just mentioning that as a kind of broader, as we just kind of consider how far we want to go with that, you know, and if we want to make something like a normal order of business where other folks are reviewing it before we actually take action. I support the statement, because I support the work that the commission does, and Dr. Brown and others are part of that doing awesome work. But if we have something canned for this issue or another issue, we just know when it goes through corp counsel, when you're reviewing it, that you're checking to make sure those kind of boilerplates are included or added before it comes to us for action. So maybe the action for the DEI Commission is, hey, what is that? Because I'm not looking for a paragraph. It doesn't need to be a book. You know, what is that, you know, two liner that encapsulates, you know, the entire, you know, intent, principle, and so on and so forth, the belief or whatever? And then we approve that, and then that goes into a book of boilerplates, what corp counsel, that they check for when those policies come. Or Adam signed off on it, then it comes to us. I think that'll take the layers out. So that's just my comment.
So the motion is to postpone indefinitely. Is there additional discussion? Commissioner Fluehling?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the speaker, as we discuss possible postponement, is this a time-sensitive issue? That you need resolution on sooner than later?
Yes.
What does that look like?
Well, we have no policy that covers many of the issues that are outlined here. We've had a recent change in our cell phone reimbursement policy, for example. It's not there.
And this policy affects, doesn't affect your operation as much as all the users of county technology?
It mostly the users of the technology and having, this is to create expectations of what the user should or should not be doing, more or less. And so, I mean, there's a lot of, our existing policies are incredibly outdated. In fact, this replaces four of them, plus adding some new stuff. So, yeah, it's fairly urgent.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Shoemaker?
May I make a friendly recommendation that, to change the motion to, we move this policy with the future, with the policy going to DEI Commission with, and asking them not just for this policy, but all policies to create a blanket statement, and that it will be added to this policy, but for now we will operate until it is added under this policy. Does that make any sense, Dale?
It does, but you're testing my Roberts rules, because we're now into amending the amendment essentially, so...
I have faith that you can handle it.
Thank you for your faith, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Mr. Chairman, I will draw my motion in favor of Mr....
Would you restate your motion? So we have motion withdrawn. Do we have to go back to the original?
The original motion was to pass.
So the original motion is to pass it. Would you like to amend the original motion?
I would like to amend it with that we ask DEI Commission to come up with a generic statement, we will put in all policies expressing our view on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that their recommendation, because that is a recommendation board, that is not the final statement this board is, that it will come to this board and we will vote on it to add it to all language, including this policy. Or all policies, including this one.
Right. Is there support for that?
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Do we have discussion? Mr. Freeman, would you care to try to restate that, just for the record? See what you got.
Yeah, so essentially the motion on the floor is to approve this policy with a recommendation to the DEI Commission that they come up with a DEI commitment statement that will be used in all current and future policies moving forward.
That we would have to approve. Right, okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. I was starting to mention some other business. I spoke with Director Coleman. Okay, I'm sorry. I will get to other business at some point. We have to vote on the motion, the final motion, is that it? Okay, so we approved the amendment to the motion. Now we have to vote on the final motion, which is what Mr. Freeman read.
Yes.
All right. We have support for that and a motion. Yep. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. You know, I was critical of Commissioner Kuzina for going on so long with his committee, and here I am.
It was the shortest one I've had in two years.
Just a couple of things under other business. I was talking to Director Coleman from G Card. We had some discussion and a vote before the new year about home-delivered meals and the budget situation. And there's been some updates involving V AAA. I'm not going to ask her to come to the microphone tonight, but I do want her to come back, I think, next week and give a very brief report on where we're at, so we know seniors are being served. And then I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Derek Britton, but I know he's here, Veterans Services. And I don't expect him to come to the mic either, but I would like to get a report on the mini-grant program that we had, using some of the fund balance from the Veterans Village, providing grants, mini-grants to veteran service organizations. If you could bring that next week, I'd appreciate it. At the full board meeting, I think. But they can be very, you know, three, four, or five minute presentations with some Q and A. I'm sure the new commissioners would be interested in hearing some of that. With that, we'll move on to item nine, which is discussion item around the workshop schedule. This was requested to be on Government Operations for this meeting, so I placed it on here. I understand that there may be a desire to have a workshop on a specific date in January. I'll defer to the chair on that. But we also want to have general discussion about an ongoing workshop schedule, so we know it for ourselves, but also so that the public is aware and so that we're transparent about how we conduct our business. So I think I'll defer to Chairman Lloyd about the specific workshop, and then we'll go from there.
I think as far as a specific workshop, you already see the communication. I think it's very, very important at the, in the infancy of our session that we actually take some time, not only to review previous priorities that have been set by the commission, receive an update as to the progress of accomplishing those priorities. To also find out if there's any additional support or resources that are needed to bring those priorities to fulfillment, completion, fruition. But then, very short, and then to spend the rest of our session determining what our priorities are for this session, this year, the next couple of years, so that not only we understand where we're going, but we also have an opportunity to cast that vision across our, our organization, across community where it's appropriate, and then to be again, to start, you know, setting course as to where we're going. And I think it'd be great for us to do that without delay, right after taking office. So I know I suggested the 18th. I know the 25th is another Saturday before January was out, but I think it'd just be a great accomplishment for us to be able to, to set those priorities within the first 30 days of our taking our seats.
So the proposed date of our first workshop is Saturday, January 18th?
It's Saturday, January 18th, but I'm open to, you know, of course, open to the commission's perspective if it's the 18th or if it's the 25th.
Would you share the timeframe that you're envisioning?
The timeframe would be like, like 10 to like 3. I think that's probably about a five-hour span that we'll be able to set, you know, and engage, interact. And then also, you know, to get to know each other a little better as well as a part of that time. That is a public meeting. Members of the public will be able to attend and so on and so forth, address the group. A public is there, but from 10 to 5.
Did you recommend?
I mean, 10 to 3.
Did you recommend a location, Commissioner?
No, I have not recommended a location. I work with our office to try to determine a place that will be able to accommodate it. If someone has ideas, certainly, you know, that'd be great too.
Okay, let's start with discussion on this. Commissioner Shoemaker?
Mr. Freeman has always been wonderful about finding unique and different places throughout our county to meet, and I'd like him to keep up with that practice, different places. And we spoke before, and I think you'd mentioned, there was another place you'd mentioned, I think, at the airport, something unique like that. I'm, just to let everybody know, if we're scheduled, 25th is really good for me. I will make the 18th worth it, if that's what we have to do, but I would prefer the 25th if that's what we're gonna do.
Commissioner Getzinger?
I too would prefer the 25th. I'm scheduled to be out of town that, the week of the 18th. But I'm good, I'm good for the 25th.
We have additional discussion. Commissioner Kuzina?
I will be unavailable for any Saturday for a workshop. I do not work on weekends. That is my family time. I'll work like a dog, Monday through Friday. As a matter of fact, I do. But that's just my personal policy. I've been that way since I got out of college. I worked my tail off to get through college. You know, I was not born with a golden spoon in my mouth, but I took a pledge that I'd never work a Saturday. That was family time, and I have been that way my entire life, and I will continue to be that way. Plus, I will not vote to require staff to be at anything on a weekend. I will take and I renew my license. I go to seminars because I have to on weekends. So I have made it... I go to seminars because I have to on weekends, so I have made exceptions to that. I will campaign on weekends. I do not work. So, I mean, you guys can have a workshop, but I will not be attending.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just give us another day that works for you. Like I said, I...
I'll be through Friday. Well, I'll work like a dog. I'll be here until midnight.
All right. Let's do, Josh, do you want to, do we want, and through the Chair, do you want to send out just a couple dates over that week of the, maybe everyone agreed the week of the 20th, and we could do an evening?
Let me just send out a doodle poll for the week of the 20th?
Unless everybody wants to vote on a night tonight, which I'm fine with, too.
The 20th is a holiday, so it'd be, just to realize.
That's the King Holiday. Commissioner Fuehelling.
Commissioner Shoemaker just mentioned it, but evenings, Saturdays were great for me, because I worked 60 hours during the week, but if it's preferable to have all nine of us here, then an evening would be preferred for me.
Let's just pick, like, does the 23rd work for everybody? The Thursday night?
Just to go off Brian, you know, could we do something like a, like a 3 to 10, or, you know, something like that? Would that work with everyone, or something later?
The 23rd likely will not work for me, but it's okay.
The 23rd, I work until 6:00. I will work until 2:00 a.m. If you guys want to do it then, for five hours.
Commissioner Avery.
Unlike Commissioner Kuzno, I have a policy, I'm not gonna work till 2:00 a.m.
I like his policy.
This is our first big test as a new commission. Commissioner Shoemaker.
This was kind of why, when we approved the agenda, I kind of wanted to have the workshops on Wednesdays, when we already planned we're gonna be there. We've cleared our schedules for the year. We kind of understood when it was gonna be, and this is why I've tried to lock it down. I was, so I had been trying to lock it down for everybody, because it is, you know, we've set Wednesdays aside, our employees, you know, the staff that are here and are dedicated, and I do appreciate every one of you are there, so that's why I was kind of getting scheduled maybe one, you know, here and there, and then get rid of a subcommittee group of meetings, so I don't, because I just know this was gonna be, we've done this merry-go-round before.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
And we still, and we still could do something like that. I mean, we could pick, you know, and we said we'd discuss it in the committee, we could pick one Thursday a month in the evening. We could pick one Tuesday a month in the evening, or one Monday a month, or one Friday a month. I do have a policy about Friday. I'm just kidding. But I'm saying, we still could pick a day a month. I'm agreeable in whatever works for folks, certainly want, would love for you to be a part of it.
Suggestion, if I may, what if we met next Tuesday, the night before the regular meeting, did a three-hour, two-hour, three-hour workshop? Guess that would be the 14th, right? Would people be available from 5:00 to 8:00? You don't look like you are, so, your face is...
I'd prefer to go into the next week if we can.
So maybe the 21st? In the evening? Thoughts? The other option is Josh could send out the doodle poll that he keeps mentioning in my ear here, and find out our availability.
Friendly, just a thought, what if we, for this one, move our next subcommittee meetings and do it that night? That would put us on the 22nd, and we already have all, are planning to be here, good Lord willing, and it would just simplify it, and then it's nothing additional on top of anyone's schedule, it's just, we'll move that subcommittee back a week.
Discussion.
I can live with that.
Commissioner Brown.
I can live with that.
Others? Commissioner Lloyd.
So, the concern is, if we have other business that's before us, that we need to take action on, that was one of my concerns with the, with the other schedule that we have, meeting less to take official action, it's not something I'm in favor of, just as one member of the I think having that regular cadence is important, and we publish that schedule, and keeping that schedule, I think, is very, very important.
So Mr. Freeman just suggested that if there is something of time sensitivity, that'll be a public meeting, even though it is a workshop, and we could add it to that agenda this one time.
But he's suggesting the committees, we have five, you know, we have five, six committees with the special appointments committee, so that's a lot different than doing it on a regular meeting night.
On a regular meeting.
Because our regular meetings are as lengthy, right? And then the other thing I want to mention is, when we're talking about those kind of deep, more sensitive issues, or we're talking about, you know, long-term planning, it's also good to be, you know, fresh, too, as a part of that, too, versus doing it at the end of a later night, when, you know. So, you know, I like the idea of Saturday, I'd love for Commissioner Kuzno to be a part of it, would not want to do it with any member not a part. So originally, I suggested Saturdays, if a day during the week works better, I'm good with that. If it's a 3:00 in the afternoon start, if that's not a challenge for folks, and we go to, you know, go to, you know, 7:00 o'clock, or 6:00 o'clock, or whatever the case may be, I'm okay with doing that, and I'm okay doing it other nights, too.
Commissioner Fuehelling.
So originally, I liked the idea of Saturdays, because you don't necessarily feel as pressured. If it runs long, everybody set aside that Saturday to do it. Doing it during the week, afternoon, evening, you get to a point, everybody just wants to go home, right? Or everybody has other commitments. If you try to do it in conjunction with committee meetings, anything else, I feel like the purpose of the workshop could get lost, to an extent.
Do we have additional discussion? Commissioner Brown.
I, I think that we should do something during the week as well. It would be nice if we could do something in the morning during the week, but I am sensitive to, you know, the folks that work. I would hate not to have the voice of Commissioner Kuzno or Commissioner Shoemaker, you know, they're, they've been on the Commission longer. They bring a certain, you know, history of things that have been done, and maybe things that have worked and have not worked. I would hate not to have their voices at the table. And so, my desire would be to have something during the week, just to, you know, just to do it in the evening, I guess, and try to, try to bring, bring your best game.
All right. So where are we? Commissioner Shoemaker.
I realize the sensitivity to subcommittees, and that's why I was trying to slide in a week ago, all the workshops, because I know we didn't want to miss out on those, but it just seems to me that everybody already has a time carved out for a Wednesday. So if we wanted to handle, and I don't know if you want to do it on a full-board night, that's, we could do that, we could do it here, and then we could go into, into the meeting from there, because those meetings generally are quicker. I think Wednesday, and if anybody disagrees with me, is a pretty good night to do it, because we already have it carved out, and it's gonna meet our goal of everybody can be here. And I think it is important that we all, especially for this first one, because this is, this is, we did this before, Derek and Josh and a few others were nice enough to organize this a couple times, and the things we put on this list, this agenda we created that we wanted to achieve as a board, we really started reaching those goals, I think, and I think it was very beneficial. And I don't want to put this off, so, and it is important that everyone is there and their voice is heard. So if everyone can be there on a Wednesday, I just think it's, we push through it, we do it, whether we want to have a subcommittee meeting night, or a board meeting night, you want to do it, or you want to back one of those off, that's, I can't say for that, for me. I mean, I would have went, you know, two and one a month, but we're past that, so, however anybody wants to move forward, but I think Wednesday is what I'm pushing for.
Commissioner Lloyd.
So it's a public meeting, so we can, we can get consensus in here, and it's okay, because it's been posted. You know, how many wants to do it on a Wednesday? I think the full board meeting nights are better than the committee nights, because we have so many meetings, and, you know, I agree with my colleague in the 9th District, don't want whatever the discussion is to get lost in, you know, you know, in the other business that we need to take care of. So if we do a full-board meeting night, Wednesday, and say we start the workshop at 3:00 or something like that, that gives us two and a half hours to have a fruitful discussion about whatever it is. And the other thing is, you know, two and a half hours should be more than enough to have a discussion about a particular topic, right? Really, I don't like to do a single meeting that's longer than one hour and a half, a single meeting, right, for a specific topic. So I guess my question would be, you know, can we, can we get a show of hands, or poll, or what have you? How many people would be agreeable to do it on a committee, I mean, a full-board meeting night, at say like 3:00 in the afternoon to, say, 3:00 to 5:00?
So that would probably lend itself then to January the 29th, if I'm looking at the calendar properly, so that we could do it as soon as possible, but also consistent with what Commissioner Shoemaker and Commissioner Lloyd have said. We have a full Commission meeting that night at 5:30 already.
I'll make a motion to do that. That way, we can, we can move it.
Have discussion on the motion.
The 29th, 3:00, 3:00 to 5:00, and then we'll have a break, you know, before our full meeting.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported.
Add that to the agenda.
Just to follow protocol, I think it would be proper to add it to the agenda.
Pull your motion and then just say...
You have an agenda.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that good enough?
It's good enough, yes.
Okay.
It's already on the agenda.
All right, good enough. All right, do we have discussion? Okay, the motion is to have our first workshop of the year on January 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00, and then a full Commission meeting at 5:30. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. What is your pleasure about discussing the rest of the workshop schedule?
I've been giving this some thought, and...
Commissioner Shoemaker.
I think if we were to lay them out from this point forward, just quarterly, and then have Mr. Freeman send out a request for dates along those certain months, if we go quarterly from this point forward, so we could have a response from everybody, what would work for them, and then we wouldn't have to overlay with our other board meetings.
Commissioner Avery.
And I'll agree with that. I think that was one of the original suggestions of the other, you know, our last meeting, is being, first of all, as was stated, workshop-specific, and then having that quarterly meeting, and that way, we'll have a good rhythm and notice, so.
All right, additional discussion? Commissioner Lloyd.
I can support that if it does not, which I know it doesn't, preclude us from being able to schedule other workshops in the same manner, you know, because we had a quarterly piece, that'd be right on the calendar, but any given month, if we use the same cadence, you know, before a board meeting, 3:00 to 5:00, or whatever, if the board agrees that that's something that we need to do, or there's three board members that decide, hey, we want to have a discussion, then we can do it. So, but for the sake of the calendar, solidifying dates, right now, I support that.
All right, any more discussion on this topic? All right, we don't need a motion on any of that, I don't believe. All right, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker, for helping us solve that issue. No further business before this committee. We are adjourned at 6:52 p.m.
We're gonna call the Human Services Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Here.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Here.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Here.
It's time the Chair entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Are there any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Any public comments to this committee? Public comments are now closed. No communications, no old business. New business, Resolution 2024-1545, approval of a grant award from GISD in the amount of $112,886 to provide for Genesee County's Great Start Readiness Program. The budget for this funding is attached.
Don't move.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Kuzno.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, this is then administered by G Card?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 2024-1583, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Tamara Dezen in an amount not to exceed $14,000 to provide for the consultation on laboratory regulations at Genesee County's Health Department. Cost of this agreement will be paid from the following account.
Don't move.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 2024-1584, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy in an amount of $314,820 to provide for Genesee County's Drinking Water and Environmental Health Division. Can I get a motion?
Move it.
Support.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Kuzno.
I know the answer, but was this bid out?
Mr. Stell.
This is just mandatory, right?
Yes.
There's no bidding.
No bidding, no. This is actually money coming to the Health Department from Department of Environmental, I mean, not Department of Environmental, yes, to do drinking water campgrounds, type two, excuse me, non-community drinking water campgrounds, long-term monitoring of contaminated
Any further discussion? Is this new? Is this a new division, or is this...
No, no. This is like a yearly, we get a yearly award each year.
Anything further? Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Resolution 2024-1605, approval of a grant award from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $427,991 to provide for water and sewer bill assistance to eligible Genesee County residents.
Don't move.
I'll support it.
Properly moved and supported. Any discussion? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not on the committee, but I, can we be reminded of the eligibility requirements?
Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Coleman from G Card, Director. Through the Chair to Commissioner Brown, the eligible, eligibility requirements is the resident must, they're either their name has to be, of course, on the bill, I'm trying to think of all the minute, but the main one is, they have to be within 200% of the federal poverty guideline. of the federal poverty guideline. That's the most important one to the, the residents, because usually, and it's within Genesee County, not just the city of Flint, I want to make sure that point is well-known.
So you said 200%?
Yes, ma'am.
Of federal poverty guidelines?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Coleman, do they have to have a certain amount of a re-urge, or is there?
With this grant, we can pay up to $3,000 in a re-urge.
Any further discussion? Commissioner, you?
Not a member of the committee, but I was wondering if we have a plan for promoting the availability of the dollars, and what that would look like?
This particular grants are, it has been advertised, we've been, we've posted on social media, our social media pages, and also all of the community events, we make sure to advertise. This particular piece for this grant, it's already in play. It was a two-and-a-half-year grant, the state, when they were, I guess, stabilizing or, or getting their, chewing up their books, they initially reduced our funded amount, and after our inquiry as to why, because we were spending out the, the grant, they realized that the reduction was in error, and they gave us the $425,000 back plus an extra $2,000 and something, because it was originally reduced by $425,000, which is in legisstar, but could probably be removed now, because we wanted to show the decrease in order to justify the increase. Sorry, that's a little convoluted, but our original award was $11,175,000, and we have, this will make us whole, plus an additional $27,000, I believe it is.
And, and a follow-up to the promotion, so it sounds like we've got, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Coleman, ongoing promotion, social media, some other things. If someone listening to this at home, or if we're out in the community, do we just tell people to call the main number at G Card and say, you know, I'm interested in some assistance, and they'll get to whoever they need to get to?
Absolutely, we have-
That's the easiest thing to do?
That is the, that, that's the path of least resistance. We get emails, which causes me to have to redirect, but if they call the number directly, that will get them in touch with one of our intake process staff to start to process on their actual application faster, but sometimes they go on our webpage, and they'll email me, but we get the information to that, that staff member so that we can get assistance to them as soon as possible.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, Pam, was that the hotline number?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, can you share that number with the, the entire board?
Absolutely, that number is 810-768-4675. 810-768-4675. And also want to make note, the, that hotline number opens at 8:30 in the morning. The slots fill up quickly because of our process and the number of staff processing applications, there is a quota of how many applications we can take daily, so that those slots fill up quickly. They start at 8:30 though, the phone lines are open, and we'll take their information.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. If there's no other business before this committee, we stand adjourned.